Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It's Wednesday, October 15th at 5:35. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Margulies.
I'm here.
Here, here. We will be adjourning to closed session and we will be rejoining for our regular council meeting, no later than 6:30. Thank you very much. Hello, we've returned from closed session with no reportable action. So we're reconvening now in our regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on October 15th. It's now about 6:32. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Margulies.
Here.
Councilmember Fonsen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. That brings us to item number two, public comment. Is this is an opportunity for the public to bring up an issue that is not on the agenda to the city council? And because it had not been agendized, we won't be able to have a lengthy conversation about it, but we could agendize it for a future meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council for an item that is not on the agenda? Yes, please, sir. You know the drill, my friend. Just introduce your name and-
I do know the drill. In first up, I'll get the mic just right. My name is David Muller, I live here in Larkspur. And there are actually two items I wanted to touch on very briefly during the public comment opportunity here. Two meetings ago, I proposed to the, that Larkspur do two things to support the Bay Area Air District's Zero Nox Rules, their implementation. One was to perhaps as a council, adopt a resolution of support or as individual council members, or perhaps as the mayor, a letter of support. And this subject was also discussed at the Climate Action Forum meeting just last week, and I think it'll probably be reported out on as reported that. And so I have now provided staff with a draft resolution and a draft letter of support. These were developed by the Bay Area Clean Air Coalition, which is a coalition of environmental organizations, and they have been closely tracking the Zero Nox issue for years. The reason to take this action, and this is pretty interesting, of the current air district board, and I don't know how many board members are, 30 something, 40, it's a big board, two thirds of them were not on the board when the air district adopted these rules in 2023. So you got a bunch of board members there that, you know, weren't, weren't on board then, didn't hear all the arguments in favor of adopting these. So timely implementation is somewhat at risk and supporting letters or resolutions from Bay Area jurisdictions and elected officials can be very persuasive, and particularly to our representative on the board, Supervisor Brian Colbert, who is also new to the board. And there's two dates I just want to mention. One is, there's a November 12th meeting of the Stationary Source Committee. That's the committee that has primary responsibility for the Zero Nox regulations and Supervisor Colbert is on that committee. So it'd be timely to get that in. The first time it'll be heard by the board would be around December 3rd. So that's kind of the timeframe. The second thing I wanted to touch on just really briefly is that at the Climate Action Forum meeting, we were informed, and maybe you all already know this, that Clarkspur's going to have to revisit its adoption of Cal Green Tier One, because it was rejected because it didn't have the supporting calculations for part of Cal Green Tier One. And what I want to let the council know is there are a number of other jurisdictions in Marin right now that are dealing with the same issue, and several of them are lined up to adopt Cal Green Tier One, except for the energy efficiency provisions, because that's the section that requires the supporting calculations. So they simply aren't adopting that, and that way they can go ahead and adopt the rest of it. And most of these jurisdictions are also supporting the so-called Flex Path, which is for major remodels. So I just want to let you know, there's a bunch of jurisdictions, including Marin County, the county government that are doing this. And I would like to urge that as Larkspur staff and city council takes another look at Cal Green Tier One, because it got rejected, that you consider adopting Cal Green Tier One without the energy efficiency measures, and that you also consider adopting the Flex Path. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Were those model ordinances submitted to staff already?
Yes.
Okay.
I gave them to Councilmember Margulies and Staff Member Shannon.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? All right, then I'll close public comment. That brings us to item three, which are presentations, and tonight we don't have any. That's item four, which is the consent calendar. There are four items on the consent calendar. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? For discussion? Is there any matter, member of the public who would like to pull a consent item for discussion? Okay, seeing none and seeing no hands raised online. I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that bring, thank you. That brings us to five, which is the City Manager's Report.
I'm going to invite Recreation Director Nick Stone to come up and fill you in on-
Pumpkin man.
A recent event that he's brought some photos and talked about what happened on the Saturday.
Good evening, council. Recreation Director Nick Stone. And I wanted to show you a little bit from our we had our second annual Piper Park Pumpkin Patch this last Saturday. This has quickly become my favorite event. This was kind of something I had been brainstorming for a few years, as I bring my family to pumpkin patches around the area and spend tons of money, usually in the heat, waiting in long lines, and always tears, sometimes my own. So this was, this was something that I've wanted to do for a while. So we work with a lot of pumpkin patch down in Half Moon Bay, and they ship up a ton of pumpkins. I think we had 250 pumpkins, 58 bales of straw, as well as various pumpkins that you can see here that are, they're kind of photo ops, and then we have some, some corn stalks as well. So this event, I've been trying to pull the Placer AI reports on it, but I'm not able to quite do it yet. My, my best guess is that any, throughout the day from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, we probably had three to 400 people. So it was a really good showing of people. I like to call it the no tears pumpkin patch. I think I saw one, one tier out there, but, but the whole point is that it's kids out there, they're doing arts and crafts. And there's no lines for anything. The kids can get inexpensive pumpkin, parents can get inexpensive pumpkins. They can be at a park and play around, have fun. One of the great things about this too is that I pull a ton of youth volunteers for this. We pulled 15 youth volunteers from Hall Middle School that came out and helped with arts and crafts. They moved a lot of pumpkins, they moved straw bales. And I think, I think those who came out had conversations with them, because they were very engaging with the public. It was, it was great. I'd like to give a special shout out to Jean Friedel and the wrecking crew who came out and sold pumpkins, planned some very cool arts and crafts out there.
In costume, too.
In costume. And, and they really brought the energy, and I couldn't do it without, without our partnership. Another special shout out to former Recreation Director Dick Whitley, who you may remember, was out there helping me move stuff around, and, and always, always great to have Dick back and helping out. So.
Great. Yeah, I was there for an hour or so, and Vice Mayor Andre was there with Scout the Dog. His name's, oh Alpine, Alpine, the dog. I talked to people who, from San Rafael, from San and Salmo, they came from all over, which was great. And I also spent a lot of time plugging the new library, because it was families, and I was like, see that new library down the road? You need to start paying attention, so. Great. Any questions of Director Stone? Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I was thinking though, have you ever seen that Modern Family where they do a pumpkin chucking? Have you ever thought of pumpkin chucking?
All the time.
I, I just saw his face, I'm sure the, remember where they do the catapult it and see how far you can go? I'm sure our police chief would really appreciate me now.
We know exactly where his office is. Maybe the contest could be when he hit it with the-
All right, is there a further manager's report? Or?
I can't follow that.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, Wrecking Crew, for putting on a very, really family-friendly event. Oh, that brings us to item six, council members' reports. Do any council members have any reports they would like to share?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to report on a few things that I've been up to. I had the privilege of going down to Long Beach to the Cal Cities Conference last week, which is an excellent opportunity for networking with lots of other elected and staffs from different cities. I had opportunities to learn about other cities' wins and lessons learned with climate and sustainability, to achieve our state mandated goals, and additional insights into effective partnering in local governance. And then highlight probably for me was the keynote speaker, who was Erin Brockovich, which was an excellent keynote session. And then I wanted to let everybody know, if you're interested in reducing your own carbon footprint, there is an organization called Resilient Neighborhoods. They offer five free session workshop series to help you understand ways that you can reduce your own impact. And they will be throwing a party this coming Sunday, the 19th, for a cooler, a party for a cooler planet. It's to celebrate their 15 years, 15 year anniversary. And I have been asked to speak and share my experience there. So if you're interested in coming, you can purchase tickets at resilientneighborhoods.org, or you can also go to that same website to sign up and participate in one of their workshops. The event is Sunday, the 19th, in San Rafael from 3:00 to 6:00. The last thing I want to report on is our Climate Action Forum. We continue to have regular attendance and very engaged community members coming out to talk about ways to prioritize, prioritize our climate action plan. And we meet every second Wednesday of the month, well, every other month, second Wednesday. So we just met this past October 8th, and we will be meeting next on December 10th, excuse me. And we meet here in the chamber from 6:30 to 8:30, so anybody interested, please come join. What we've decided is that, given these unprecedented times we're living in, and the very fast-paced environment we're facing, many time-sensitive issues. And so originally, when council created our CAF, we decided that I would come and report on the off months. But given the time sensitivity of some of the things we're facing, we feel it's better for me to be reporting to you guys on the meeting after we meet, so that we're not losing a whole month in between, when we could be actually giving some direction to staff to take action in areas that are time-sensitive. So on that note, I want to just suggest that I will continue to report out on the Wednesday after, and then what will, what Shannon and I have discussed, and which we think makes a lot of sense, is for her to then report out, give a staff report out on the off months to, to give us an update on where staff is. So based on our last meeting, we had prioritized, CAF has come to a consensus on prioritizing three actions, which are part of our Larkspur 2030 Climate Action Plan, and which the request is to have council direct staff to scope projects of two of those actions. Those two actions are considered high-impact actions. So in other words, they would correlate to having the greatest reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So we, CAF would like to request that council consider adopting the draft ordinance. It was just discussed here by our member of the community, David Muller, to support the Bay Area Air District Zero Emission Building Appliance Rules, which is in direct support of one of the two high-impact items that we recognize as priorities in our climate action plan. CAF recommends also, in support of the second high priority item, that council direct staff to explore ways to accelerate EV charging for multifamily buildings. And then lastly, we discuss 9.57, which is the restriction of leaf blower use, is, it's a local ordinance that exists today in Larkspur, and it prohibits the use of gas-powered leaf blowers and hedge trimmers with some exceptions. And CAF would like to recommend that council direct staff to develop a communications outreach plan, to educate the residents about the ordinance, and possibly collect data to assess the value of running a local rebate program. So those were the three items that came out of our Climate Action Forum, and that's my report. Any questions?
So would you like to comment of where that, where staff is, or in that process of those things? Because I, I know that the leaf blowers is definitely going to bring up a lot of issues for many of our larger property owners. Is this something we should agendize for another meeting? Or is this something you've got work on? Yeah.
Let me just make sure I, I'm, I'm making it clear, Catherine. What Climate Action Forum would like is for us to just educate the public, that we have an ordinance that exists, and that this is what the ordinance states, and so that people are aware that they're not supposed to be using
Yeah.
Gas-powered. Yeah, so it's not, we're not doing anything other than trying to make sure we get the word out and, and make people understand that this exists as an ordinance today.
Okay, so, all right. So it sounds like the CAF is really working on these things, and if they, with our staff member, who's Assistant City Manager Shannon O'Hair, if they want to bring it forward to an, an agendized item, we can do that.
I just want to emphasize something that Councilmember Margulies reported, which is, in the future, there would be an agenda item with the report out from the CAF
Yeah.
On the agenda for discussion and direction at the meeting right after the CAF meets. So this is why it's awkward, and why that's a good recommendation, is if we had an agendized item, you could give us direction on the things that Councilmember Margulies is reporting on.
Great.
So we will have that in the future.
Okay, good. This, this CAF has really grown into pretty substantial recommendations and suggestions, so thank you for that. Plus, the community who's been very interested in having that organized for a while. Anything on the right side? Can you report out, Scott, on anything?
Sure. I'll just do a quick report out. I went to the, the Library Board, trying to figure out the funding plans, and not just currently, but moving forward. They basically asked city council to take on that role, which is to determine who are going to be the different fundraisers, what lanes everybody's going to be in, what organizations are going to deal with, whether we have an endowment, or, you know, future funding for library purposes, as the new library is going to be more expensive to run than the old library. So I am going to ask if we could agendize that, and we can invite all of the, anybody interested in being part of that process, to explain kind of what their vision is, and we can kind of make a decision as a council, so that we don't have people moving in contradictory, contradictory ways or competitive waves, that we're all moving together as a city.
So I would suggest that we only have three meetings left till the end of the year, that this is something that's going to need a little bit more of a ramp time. So because we only have, we have two in November, one in December, maybe two in December, but this is going to need a little bit more of a thought-through ramp time, so it's probably not going to really fall onto an agenda until the beginning of next year.
So I would counter that.
As I would expect.
With the idea that this is not going to be a one-session decision. And that while the library is being built, there are substantial opportunities to raise funds sooner rather than later that would be used for this endowment, and that the sooner we start this process, the better will be. And that, and when I say add it to the agenda, it means to start the conversation, not to make the substantial decisions that are going to need to be made.
So I'll propose, since we're both the liaisons, that the two of us meet with the managers sometime in the near future, to think this through a little bit, as to what our expectations and goals are of that, and what the timing really should be. So
Sounds good.
I'd love to do that with you, and we can figure it out, so that it, because I know our agendas for the next three sessions, we have a lot of things that need to be covered before the end of this, of the calendar year. So we'll do that, we'll reach out to you, and three of us can sit down and kind of think through how we want to run that.
And Dana, so you're holding the microphone, which usually means you have a comment?
I was just going to tell you, as a reminder, what we, I'm going to look over at the Public Works Director, what we think will be the last time we bring you the library project with a discussion of its budget is at your next meeting. And we were meeting today with the Commons Foundation President, Ian Morrison. So as part of the conversation on the 5th, I think they'll be sort of talking with you and with us about where they are in terms of contributing to the project. And it might not be a terrible time to just sort of kick off the what's next conversation.
Okay, well, let's, I, I, yeah, let's talk about it offline. I, I mean, the two of us as the co-leads with you, and we can do that before, we can have that conversation before the next agenda is posted.
Sounds good.
But I would want to make sure that everyone who's involved in the sphere of, is, has plenty of notice, because it's a very, there's a lot of entities, and they, they need to make sure that they have plenty of notice to be able to participate, so.
Fair.
Okay.
If I can indulge too, I didn't point out, but if you've driven by the library, Alton worked really hard to button it down, knowing the rains were coming. It looks surprisingly finished. Get there.
It's not, but it sure looks amazing.
Okay, anything, yes.
I have a couple of updates. One, just want to let everyone know that Mayor Way and I hosted a charrette along with staff on City Hall last week. It was the second sort of town hall, public workshop on City Hall, and, you know, how we want to reimagine the space. We had good attendance from our residents, and we collected a lot of feedback. We, this time, we asked specific questions of people and had people write down their feedback, and we received a lot of really good feedback. So as next steps, we're going to be launching an online survey for people who couldn't come to the public workshops, so that people can submit their feedback to us online. And we'll probably let that run probably until at least the end of the year, and then be able to consolidate all feedback, and then bring it back to council for discussion, probably, you know, at the start of next year. So.
Thank you, thank you for being there.
Oh, wait, just, oh, go ahead, sorry. And then, secondly, I do want to update everyone on MCE, which is Marin Clean Energy. We have had a couple of board and executive committee meetings with respect to reviewing the fiscal and Q1 2026 financial results, which were challenging. So there's, there was a $12 million loss in fiscal 2025, and followed by a $27 million operating loss in the first quarter of 2026. And then concurrent with the financial review, MCE has also received letters from the public expressing, from members of the public like Clean Coalition, Marin Conservation League, Sustainable San Rafael, and 350 Marin. These are all, you know, environmental groups that have followed MCE for a long time, and are very well-versed in the renewable energy space. They have all sent in public comment letters expressing concern about recent financial performance, and pointing out that MCE's rates are higher than PG&E's, and have been advocating for greater financial transparency and board oversight. And so as your Larkspur representative, I am working on all of these issues. I have joined the technical and executive committees of MCE to try to get a better overview of the different aspects of the operations of the agency. I have, I am advocating for a standing finance committee to provide a little bit more board oversight into the operational results. And I am on record at the board meetings advocating for rate decreases to our customers. But that said, I think, you know, the challenge here is going to be that we need consistent and stable operating performance, you know, before we can actually reduce rates for customers. And so therefore, I am really trying to get a handle on the increase in energy costs, and trying to see, you know, what can be done to mitigate the costs, so that we can actually reduce the rates to ratepayers. If any of these issue, if you're, if anyone from the public is interested in any of these issues, MCE meetings are open to the public, and I would encourage anyone to attend the meetings and make your views known. Thanks.
Thank you. Gabe, anything? Okay. I just two kind of mayor things I did this weekend was the Bon Air Invitational Car Show. I gave the award for the People's Choice Award, and it was this great car, a lemon-yellow Kaiser, which I never even knew Kaiser made cars. But it was a lot of fun to have that, the Invitational Car Show there. So, and then last thing, I just, I'm really impressed with the Larkspur Community Foundation's social media. They have ramped it up. So if you're on social media, like them and follow them on Instagram and Twitter, et cetera, they're posting all sorts of things that are really city-related, and not just about the community foundation. And I appreciate that that's helping us try to get more engagement. And then lastly, I have tomorrow to give a presentation or a proclamation to Marin Primary and Middle School, which is right down the street. It's their 50th anniversary, and it's been a staple in Larkspur for 50 years, serving our community and a broader community. So that's tomorrow. They're having a public event, or so people can come by and see their open house, I think. All right, that leaves us with-
Sorry, Meta Mayor, can I add one thing?
No.
I just remembered, there's a ribbon cutting on Saturday
Oh, right.
For Yoga Six in the Bon Air Shopping Center. I believe it's on Saturday.
Yeah, you're doing it, because they're both out of town.
Right. Saturday at noon. Anybody want to, wants to come down? There's going to be ribbon cutting, and I think they're going to have a DJ and some music and a, a big old party, so come on down.
Yeah. Great. That brings us to public hearings, and tonight we have none. So we're going on to our first four business items. And the first is the Additional Options for Recreation Department relocation. There is a handout in the back and additional materials that will be available online. So we, this is our second time discussing this. We had a, on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, and the council gave some feedback to staff wanting some more information and some more options, and I believe Director Skinner's going to share some of that with us.
Yes, good evening. Public Works Director Julian Skinner. Good evening. So we have an update from our last presentation. We were asked to come back with a few more options and some additional information based on the presentation we provided on September 17th. Again, the first couple of slides are just a recap of what we went over last time, so I won't go into them in great depth, but this is the floor plan of the current Recreation Department space that's leased over the Larkspur Quarter Madera School District, and includes some private offices and some flex space and a public counter. Here's the overall site plan showing the southern portion of Piper Park and the police building and Hall Middle School. And the yellow star here focuses on the area that we've identified as a suitable location for new rec department offices, following their exit from the Larkspur Quarter Madera School District upcoming. Here's, I'm zooming in here. This is kind of a location map to identify a couple of things that I'll go into further detail on. The blue dotted area here, the rectangle at the bottom center of the screen, is the footprint location that we're looking at for a new building. And then just north of that, the brown rectangle is an existing public restroom building. Uh, and then just north of that, the brown rectangle is an existing uh, public restroom building. And then just to the right of the blue uh, rectangle um, is where we have four current E V charging stations. And uh, we're looking at adding another six along uh, that line of parking spaces. A little bit more information on the public restroom. Uh, we mentioned last time that it's in a state of disrepair. It needs uh, some pretty extensive renovation. Um, there's three public bathrooms in there. There's a staff bathroom in there too. It's not really a staff bathroom. It's more of a janitorial bathroom. It's got like a wet mop area in it and such. Uh, and then there's some storage areas kind of in between the four uh, bathrooms or at the four corners of the building and then kind of the center of the building. Is storage, there's a combination of uh, janitorial materials in there and then some of the Recreation Department's uh, programming materials. Hoppers full of tennis balls and balls. So the issues I mentioned, uh, there's wood rot in the building. The building does leak. I was in there the other day during the rain. Uh, there's a lot of water uh, in there uh, on the floor. And it doesn't meet current ADA standards. Uh, so those are the primary issues. It don't have a construction date, but looking back at historic aerials, it looks like it was built in the early eighties. So it's about forty years old and it kind of shows that. And there's a, there's a close up here of some of the, the wood rot um, that you see around the building. Last time we presented kind of a quick overview up to one point two million is what we said for a replacement facility. So that would be uh, something to replicate the storage and the bathrooms that are there now that size, which is just over eight hundred square feet. There would be an option uh, if we looked at alternate storage locations such as storage sheds that we could reduce the footprint uh, down and just focus on the restrooms only. And so um, I did do a little bit more research and if we were to reconstruct as a restroom only with the four restrooms, it's in the four hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. And again, that kind of depends on the level of fit and finish that uh, you want for the building. And then uh, we haven't done a detailed evaluation and a renovation estimate, but based on the items we've identified and the need to uh, completely redo the four uh, washrooms, uh, put a new roof on, replace most of the wood and correct some of the water intrusion issues. It's probably in the three fifty to six hundred thousand dollar range to do a uh, a renovation project uh, on that building. So that's the restroom building.
Julian, before you go on, let me just see if the council has any questions for you on this project, on this um, portion, which is the standalone restroom option. No questions?
Oh, I was going, um, thank you, Julian, for the new estimates. I think that's helpful. Um, so on the restroom only replacement. So does that also imply that we have to buy some storage sheds?
Yes, that would be a new building that would have only four restrooms in it and no storage. So then we would be looking at finding alternate locations for storage. And we've been looking into um, storage facilities that are like, like a tough shed, is a name, for example. You can um, get them and, you know, we would probably have a couple of them and split up the janitorial and, and the rec supplies and, you know, that may not actually be the best place for them. So uh, we haven't really got into the details, but they're roughly, depending on the level of quality, we want ones that are watertight. They're in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range per unit. And we'd need two of those size units to replicate the storage we have.
Okay, so you need two units. And then, so you're saying four bathrooms, so three public and then one staff in, in these numbers? Is that in these numbers? Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else at this time? No? Okay, keep going.
The other um, kind of side issue to the Recreation Department offices we mentioned last time was the need to upgrade the um, electrical in Piper Park. And so we had built that into the cost estimates for the permanent uh, new building. We've since kind of rethought that and want to compare apples to apples. So we pulled that out of, of the numbers moving forward. The electrical needs to be upgraded today primarily because of the E V stations. And so if we were going to add E Vs, it would definitely need to be upgraded. And so we've removed this from the rec department offices conversation and kind of left it as a set aside. In addition to that, we believe there's alternate funding that is suitable for um, electric vehicle infrastructure that wouldn't be the same funding we would potentially look at for the rec department offices. So, and in addition to other funding sources, there's also rebates and some grant programs out there for um, E Vs. So this number that's, you know, four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we've taken it out of the equation moving forward. So the numbers you see for the building are already going to be less than what I proposed last time because I think when we come back to you in the future, we'll, we'll come back to you with this as a, as a standalone set aside project. There will need to be some upgrades for the electrical to support a new rec uh, building, but it primarily the electrical upgrades will be driven by the, the E V.
Julian, I'm sorry. Metamere, um, I, I was under the impression last time that there was some uh, convergence that you, there would be a money saving if we did the E V upgrades and the electrical at the same time that, that we did the other construction. My question is, if you pull this out, how do we calculate the savings of doing it together?
Yeah. So I'm going to pull it out on paper. In practice, yes, the best path moving forward uh, overall for all of the funds combined would be to do these two projects together. But they would be, have separate funding sources.
Can, can you tell us kind of in a, a, a dollar figure what we are saving by doing it together as opposed to separately?
Yeah. So the numbers I've used is about fifty thousand. So I've estimated this as a standalone project to do the E Vs is four hundred and fifty thousand. That number plugged in to the uh, rec buildings that you saw previously was four hundred thousand. So there's about a, a fifty thousand dollar savings if we can lump this in and do it in one contract. The money would still be separated. Kind of like with the library, there's different pots of money for the grants, uh, but everything's being built by one contractor. But we're just pulling um, this out of the conversation because we're focusing on uh, funding for the actual rec uh, department building.
And Julian, one more clarification. I, I think beyond the E V um, requirement that the park, I, I, I think there's a need for sound equipment and all that. And, you know, maybe you can just, you know, say more about that. And what would help me also is like what power ratings like E Vs are going to be, I don't know, in the order of a few thousand watts or something. And then what's the, you know, ancillary power? Is it comparable or much smaller?
Yeah. So there's um, so what this, how this was priced out when we did it was um, or the next uh, panel size up from what the E Vs would require. So there's some additional capacity in there. When you bring power to the site, as you know, at your home, you have a hundred amp panel or a two hundred amp panel or a four hundred. There's, there's jumps. Uh, so when we estimated this, we overestimated the size of the panel beyond what the E V needed to be. We haven't run back and done all the calculations and seen how many extra plugs, for instance, in the park we would get from that. But we know this has additional uh, capacity built into it.
Okay, thank you. So is it like a thousand amps or, you know, what are we talking here?
This, I believe, was it was either four or six hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was only going to, Julian, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, one of the other challenges we face now is the way P G N E works is different than in the past. So we can't sort of speculate. They want to know exactly how much power they want to draw. So combining everything has some advantages because we only have to go through one application process with P G N E. If we break the projects out, each one of those projects is subject to a separate application and the timeline is pretty lengthy. So.
So uh, I'm sorry to take a question on that. We're, we're like bringing the power in from the, the road, I assume, in order to upgrade it. It, or do we have to do that twice if we don't do it together?
No, we would um, well, if we don't do it together and there's a significant delay, then it depends how P G N E decide to bring power to the site and where they want the disconnect to be between P G N E's power and the city's feed off of that. So typically they'll bring everything into a transformer and then you pull off the transformer. If they only want to bring a transformer just past Doherty and then they want our power to be all the way in the driveway up to the parking lot, then yes, we would have to go all the way back to Doherty. But we have to work through that process with P G N E. Ideally, we'd bring the transformer as close to the building and the E V chargers as possible. So the, the city's part of the electrical is, is minimized and P G N E are responsible for everything in the driveway. But that's a detail that we need to work through with, with P G N E.
And I, I just wanted to highlight this point because time is money and one of the big delays we're learning, not just in our projects, but talking to our colleagues in other cities, is this new P G N E process and getting connections approved. It's a lengthy process. In fact, the library we programmed in over a year to make sure that we got approved in a timely manner. And um, it used to not be that complicated, but I understand P G N E is trying to understand all these different draws, all these new technologies that are being hooked up. Um, so there's a lot of value object wise to combine these things too.
So in, in this part of your presentation, you're giving us um, two options. Um, one is standalone uh, restroom repair or replace. But you took out the E V part, but we have that option to add it back in if, should, should we choose?
So the, yeah, so the, the restroom information I'm providing in the event that you decide you don't want to proceed with a permanent
That restroom in the main building.
For uh, the rec department, then those are your options for addressing the, the restrooms that, when we need to, to do that. The, the E V and the electrical upgrade isn't really any different than what I proposed last time. Other than I'm highlighting now that we believe pretty strongly that there's additional funding outside of our conversation of funding we'll need for the rec uh, department building. So I just want to remove that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the conversation about the cost of the rec building. It still will be part, it still needs to be part of the, the project as the city manager explained. If we do split it up, it'll cause complications with, with P G N E. But I'm just kind of putting that to the, to the side. But that, that four hundred and fifty or four hundred, whatever it ends up being will be part of a future conversation when this project moves forward. We're just anticipating it'll be a different fund source than
Got it.
uh, what we're considering for the options we're going to present.
Sarah, it looked like you had a question? No?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So I do want to um, highlight, uh, we did present some lower cost options. Um, if we didn't want to commit to a permanent building at that site. Uh, we looked at two different options. One was a smaller trailer that will essentially allow us to run the recreation staff uh, from Piper Park. And the other was to go to a, a bigger uh, portable uh, kind of classroom type that would uh, have some flex space in it so they could do some uh, programming. So these are the same numbers that I presented last time. These are your, don't build a, a permanent structure, but let's do something temporary. And again, these have rental options, so we can do this year by year. Or these units are available uh, to purchase if we knew it was going to be more than a couple of years and we thought it was um, worth uh, paying the, the, the cost of purchase versus the, the rent. And again, these are just typical examples. The top one's kind of hard to see because it's on a white background, but it's basically a white construction trailer typical to the the construction trailer that you see out on the library site. Um, these are very commonly used in construction projects or twelve feet wide. Typically have an office on each end and then like a little conference room table um, in the middle. And then the bottom is a portable classroom. So this is kind of like a double wide, gives you a little bit more flexibility. We typically tuck a, an office or two and a bathroom in a corner and then the rest is kind of open uh, flex space. These are, these options, the interim options are not on foundations. Um, they're just on a, a gravel pad. So moving to the permanent building options. So these are the two options that I presented last time. Again, the costs are slightly reduced because I've taken that um, electric vehicle charger and the electrical upgrade cost out of these. But we presented with you a, a, a twenty four hundred square foot building, uh, which is uh, we're looking at uh, modular for this. And so they go up in increments of four hundred and eighty square feet. So this is the next size above what Recreation currently um, has. We looked at a couple of different options. One, uh, we're calling the enhanced modular. So this is um, steel construction. It's a very sustainable design. It's designed for fifty years. I would say this is equivalent to what we're doing out of the library. So it's steel construction. It's, you know, the siding is designed to last fifty years on that building. So that would be the equivalent of your new library construction, uh, but in a modular format. Uh, and then kind of a step below this would be your typical basic modular construction. Um, still a good building. This is a, a step above a portable classroom. And these are, again, the estimated life is not a warranty from the manufacturer. This is uh, kind of best practice on the, the life of these things before you look at replacement. And so the enhanced modular is three point one million. The basic modular is two point six. Again, these are not construction numbers. These are all in. These are project numbers. So twenty five percent of these numbers is your soft costs. That's your architects. Construction management, construction oversight. So um, these are full in uh, project costs.
And I'm sorry, Julian, uh, for reference, can you tell us? You, you said the enhanced modular is similar to the library. Can you tell us the square footage of the library and the cost of the library? So we can see if this is actually a good deal or a bad deal?
Yeah. So the library is about nine thousand square feet. Well, the library and the um, the library and the community space, nine thousand square feet. And the cost, the construction cost, plot, well, the overall budget is about seventeen million. That includes site work. There's probably a little bit more site work at the library. If you're comparing numbers to numbers, you could probably knock off about a million and a half. Well, plus there's Rose Lane. So you could probably knock that down to about thirteen to fourteen in actual building, building costs.
And that doesn't include the landscape underneath that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I took the seventeen down to thirteen or fourteen to take the landscape out of it.
But I, I think they're very different buildings. I mean, they're may have the same square footage, but the design of the options here for recreation are pretty standard rectangular shape. The library design has broad window views. It has outdoor patios. It has functional things in it that would not be necessary here. So.
The, I mean, this is going to be, when I say similar to the library construction, I mean more other construction materials and the quality of materials. We're not going to get a Nolan Tam designed modular building here. That's a, a one of a kind uh, library that was um, had some architectural design. This is, the enhanced modular is going to have some enhancements versus a traditional square classroom. You know, there's things you can do with um, roof lines and, and window sets that'll make it look not modular. But no, it won't, it won't look like a Nolan Tam designed library though.
I see the new library at College of Marin is also a, a opening and that's a Nolan Tam too, isn't it?
I don't know. I don't know. It's Alton.
Alton.
It's all, it's Nolan Tam.
Yeah. It's got very big expansive view windows, et cetera. Okay. Um, did, would that answer your, did that answer you?
Yes, it did.
Keep going.
Um, and again, so this is the footprint. If we look at that area that we've identified, uh, we could fit about thirty four hundred square feet in there. But again, we landed on showing twenty four hundred square feet. Based on going a little bit above what uh, the rec department currently has. Again, this was the floor plan that we shared. Um, the gray area here is kind of the offices. And then incorporating the three public restrooms. Uh, one of them would be internal facing in, in this layout that we did and two of them would be external. Um, and then some janitor space, two offices, some open flex space uh, for staff and then a public counter. And then a multi-purpose room that's about twenty five by forty. So that's a little bit wider and just a little bit shorter than this room for, for reference. And then we did get some questions about, there's three public restrooms now and we're only showing two external. So we did talk to our architects and it is possible without really affecting the bottom line at the estimate, estimated um, numbers that we have that you could fit a third bathroom in here and reduce some storage. And, and again, then we'll be looking at uh, potential storage units for that displaced uh, space. So there is room to add what would be a fourth restroom in here. It would be the third um, accessible from the exterior.
And the rectangle on the far left, the dotted rectangle, that is for potential expansion?
Yeah, that's just showing how much of the flat buildable area is still be left out there.
Still be there. Okay.
They showed it. Um, you could fit another two modules in there if you wanted to in the future.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And so as we uh, had this conversation at our last meeting, we were uh, talking about ways to bring those costs down on the permanent options. And so one of the identified ways was to reduce the square footage of of the building. And so again, we're of the building. And so again, we're looking at modular here. So the next size down would be going from twenty four hundred down to nineteen twenty. And so um, I met with uh Recreation Director Stone, and we kind of looked at the floor plan, and we moved a few things around, and we chatted about the space. Um, and his primary feedback was, I want to keep as much of the multipurpose room as I can. Uh, because the first thing that I thought of here was we'll just cut one of the multipurpose room modules out because it's two modules wide. Uh, but he explained to me how that wouldn't work for their programming. Uh, basically, you would have a twelve foot wide space, and you can imagine the kind of programming they do in there. And if you're in a long, narrow kind of corridor, it wouldn't work very well. So um, so he pressed me to to try and get the space somewhere else. So um, what we did here is I looked at basically, I took the multipurpose room, took a couple of feet out of it and moved it into the office. Um, and then uh we took the two offices that were in there and kind of turned one around and pushed it into what was that open flex space uh for staff uh before and kind of ate up that space. And then we crunched a little bit the public counter and the reception. And we kept the restrooms. And again, for this particular version, I'm showing the the three restrooms plus the one inside, so four restrooms. So essentially, this is a, if you look at the blue coming from the blue over and then the gray on the right stays. What I've done is I've I shaved a little bit off the multipurpose room and kept the restrooms and squished everything in and taken most of that space out of what was flex space in the middle uh for overflow staff or consultants or um con- contract workers um and things like that. And so um, it is a little bit smaller of a multipurpose room, but this is as as small as as Nick was saying uh would really work for the programming. So this gets us down, I think, to about twenty two feet wide and the forty feet long. So that again is a little bit smaller than the space.
And the savings is four hundred thousand?
Yes, so
Between what we discussed, uh, the twenty four hundred square foot versus the nineteen twenty square foot.
Yeah, so uh, well, it's, it depends on which option you're looking at. So I've got the um, the costs are summarized on this table here because the other thing we looked at was we showed you an enhanced and we showed you a basic.
Yeah.
Uh, but there is a level below basic too that's similar to what a portable would be, but you put it on a foundation. So it's a, it's a step up from a portable. But it's not to the level of the basic that we provided before. So uh, that was kind of a a reduced overall cost option. Um, and then we've also got the reduced footprint option. So you end up with a matrix that has six different costs on here. So um, what I've got here is I've got two lines reading across. One is for the reduced footprint, which is the nineteen twenty square feet. And then the bottom line is for the twenty four hundred square feet. Uh, each of the columns is for the varying degrees of building quality. So on the far right is the enhanced, which is what I presented last time, the three point one million for the twenty four hundred. If you go down to nineteen twenty square feet for that, it's twenty six hundred, or sorry.
Twenty two.
It's two million, six hundred thousand.
Got it.
Um, and then if we cut back to the basic modular option, we go from the two point six million for the twenty four hundred to about two point two for the uh nineteen hundred and twenty square foot. And then if you cut back further and you look at a more, a more basic, basic uh modular, but still on a foundation, still a permanent building, just not the same quality of build. Um, you could do a twenty four hundred square foot for two point two million, or you could do the nineteen twenty square feet for one point eight million. So you've got a matrix of six options.
Ju- Julian, could can you tell us, uh, I'm looking at the enhanced module, the fifty year life, the basic module, twenty five year life. What is the uh expected lifespan of the classroom build?
Um, it's probably in the fifteen to twenty year range, uh, but it'll definitely start to look its age at at year ten. Um, and these buildings are also, the more basic the building is, is the less or sorry, the the more difficult it is to renovate in the future, just based on the way it was was built. Um, but yeah, it'll start to show its age probably at about year ten, and then you could probably fifteen and maybe squeeze twenty years out of it.
Thank you.
Um, and again, these numbers are all inclusive. These are not just the construction of the building. This includes um your architects and construction management and staff time. All of those. Um, another question we were asked was about solar and sustainability and net zero. And so um, these, the costs that are presented include uh building to the current codes. Um, the current code does not require solar on the buildings, but it it requires the buildings to be solar ready to a degree. Um, if the buildings are less than ten thousand square feet, which ours are, uh, you have to at least provide for um that you could have eighty square feet of solar on the roof, which isn't much if you think of the twenty four hundred square foot building. Um, and there's no requirement for battery storage, similar to what we have at the the library. We have batteries um in the event the power goes out. There's no code requirement for that. But we did look at those options for this size of a building. Um, again, there's some pretty complex calculations in how to uh calculate for net zero energy and net zero carbon for a building that you don't really get into until you start uh picking out the mechanical systems and everything like that. But we've estimated it's in the hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range um to add that goal into the project. Um, and then for this add-on, it's actually less expensive to add it on to the more expensive, the enhanced building, because that is already built with a lot of sustainability features in it. Uh, it's a higher quality construction, and it won't need some of the upgrades that the lower quality builds would in order to support some of these um, some of these features. For example, the basic, basic classroom might need some additional uh structural reinforcement to support a roof full of solar panels. Whereas your enhanced building, the companies that build those have the expectation that somebody building that quality of a building is going to put solar panels on all of these um, all these elements in it. So I would say it's you're probably closer to the hundred add-on for if you do the enhanced. Uh, but if you go with one of the more basic options, you're probably looking at more like the hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh add-on.
Julian, quick question. I'm kind of going back to the portable trailers. Uh, so it was fourteen hundred square feet, four hundred thousand dollars. Um, what's the life of that, you know, relative to the grid you did here? Is it kind of like the classroom life or?
A little bit less. Um, it's probably like ten years.
Okay. Okay. And then and then the discussion you had with um Nick about, you know, the programming and that, I mean, you know, going from twenty four hundred to to nineteen, whatever, forty or nineteen twenty seemed like you were making some sacrifices. So now if we go down to fourteen hundred, is that even an option, you know, for from that perspective?
It it's really a, again, that option is presented more as a temporary, um, kind of an interim option. It provides an office space and a bathroom, and it provides some open space for some programming. But again, it's going to be in a portable. It's not going to be on a on a foundation. So I don't know if it would be as attractive for rentals or programming as a permanent building would. It won't have all the features. It'll have an air conditioning unit hanging out of the window. Um, it'll probably have extension cords, you know, hanging around. So um, you know, the the fourteen forty, I said it has flex space. I think Nick can probably talk more to what he might be able to program in that, but that was kind of more of a of an interim.
Okay. And then the other piece is that by going, because I I'm just wondering if there's a rule out here for the portable. You know, it was, it was certainly financially attractive, but um for the permanence, it's sort of implied that the restroom is then fully been addressed. So the replacement in kind of one to one point two million is now kind of you know, freed up because it's been wrapped into or bundled into this. So if we did the portable, there's no bathroom, so it'd be four hundred, say, and then you still need to deal with one or one point two at some point. So so the true cost is closer to one point six, if if that math is right.
So I think, so I did present some less expensive options for the restrooms.
Yeah.
Also, you wouldn't have to do the one or the one point two. You could look at the restroom alone. But but yes, if you're going to do a permanent building, that is your least expensive, most economical way to replace those bathrooms is to work them into the the floor plan of the recreation department building. If you're not going to do that, or you're not going to incorporate them into the permanent building, then that's when you look at that standalone on the first slide where it was as high as one point two, or you can maybe get it down to three fifty if you just redo the or four fifty, whatever that lower number was. If you just do the bathrooms and you you figure out the storage somehow.
And just one last point of clarification. So so there were the three options. So just looking at restroom only four hundred fifty to six fifty replacement kind, one to one point two million. Which is is a better equivalent if we're going with the twenty four hundred, you know, either twenty five or fifty year life building? You know, which one have we really knocked out? Just the restroom or or the uh the replacement in kind?
Because I think Is there is there storage?
Yeah.
So so the replacement incline included storage, is that included in the twenty four hundred?
It is, it is not. I think when we looked at this and we looked at the price tag of replacing this uh facility and saw how much of it was storage, that's when we started to have the conversation about storage doesn't really need to be in a fifty year building. That probably, if you take anything out of looking at these costs, is there's probably a more cost effective way to handle our our storage. So I think the the assumption is if you were to do this restroom building, um, then you would be looking at the four fifty to six fifty restroom reconstruct and handling your storage elsewhere. If you're looking at the permanent building and you add that fourth restroom into the permanent building, then I think we're having the same conversation about maybe storage uh sheds.
And and I'm sorry, just a a follow up. If we do the new building, the space where the old restrooms are, that's just going to be demolished and that'll just be empty space at this point?
Yeah, we haven't programmed anything for that space and whether the storage unit
Right, there could be storage there if we wanted to. Okay.
You had something?
I just was gonna say, I realized we never sunshine or made clear that Nick Stone is gonna do a brief presentation after Julian about programming, because I think, I'm starting to hear we're drifting into, well, what exactly does programming look like and what are these spaces allowed? He is going to talk to them.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and so again, I'm going to present a few slides to show some modular buildings. There's all different kinds of modular buildings. You can do all kinds of different things with them, but I did want to um, highlight, this is um, this is an enhanced option. So this is different than the one I showed you last time that was a a stucco building. This just shows a couple of other finishes that you can have. And the the left, the top left is just highlighting that you don't have to have run-of-the-mill window after window pattern like you do in a in a classroom. Um, there's some relief there. The bottom one uh shows there's an inset, so there's an alcove built into the building um, to give more of a formal entryway. Um, and it also has wood siding. And then the top right just shows that it's it's hard to see in this picture. I apologize, but this shows the steel construction. So those are the steel trusses going up uh for the roof. Um, again, this is kind of that basic modular that I shared. Uh, so it's, you know, it's a bit of a step up from your modular classroom. This one happens to show a a stucco finish. Uh, but again, there's a few different things you can do here with um storefront windows and and things like that to make it not look like a um, a portable. And then this is an example of a of a what I'm, what I presented to you as the lowest cop cost option, which is kind of your portable classroom, but this one's on a foundation. It's hard to see, but there's, those are actually, it's a brick ramp that's built up to it. So this is a uh, permanent um install. I think that was the last slide. So I'm available for any questions. And then as the city manager uh mentioned, I think uh the recreation uh director can speak more to some of the programming and uh, the difference between the nineteen twenty square feet and the twenty four hundred square feet
Yeah.
and what that means to to his operation.
Um, thank you, Julian. Um, really appreciate that you reworked some of this um to give more um options for the council, because at our last meeting um, there was some uh interest in finding out how we could do some cost reduction. So thank you for doing that. Um, I think we'll reserve more comments or questions for you until after we hear about the programming, unless there are any pressing questions right now. Okay. We're we're gonna have plenty of time to discuss it, but Nick, would you join us and?
Thank you. So I actually don't have um a whole lot of presentation for you. I was just gonna talk a little bit and kind of open it up to everyone about what to uh, what questions you had. One, um obviously, I'm going to advocate for the bigger space.
Yeah.
The location that we have out there is that spot is going to be highly sought after. Um, the current community room that we have is not a highly sought after place. The public loves to use it. They're constantly calling and asking for it. I will program whatever I can in it. Um, but we're challenged where we are. We're we're uh on school property, so challenge uh programming during the day is difficult. And um even programming after hours is difficult because of what can and can't happen on on school property. Uh, we also don't have restroom space. I'm not going to go on too much about this. Um, but I think that this this building has the opportunity to be to be very programmed. Um, I think uh Dan shared some numbers with you about rentals that we did last year. I think we did five thousand dollars in rentals out of the community room. Uh, pre-COVID, that number looked like seventy two hundred. Um, so rental wise, it is not a cash cow. Um, what its true value is for the recreation i- is programming. So that's that's theater programs, that's art programs. Um, we've done exercise classes out of there. Um, and when you look at a space like this, if you imagine maybe twelve people on steps doing step aerobic, which is a a program that we had for many years, uh, the space kind of shrinks up quickly. Um, the good thing about this location is it'll have nice windows and it'll feel more open than our room right now. Um, but I think there's really a lot to add to having a little bit more space. Uh, one of the the programs that I I laugh about, we've done it a few times in our current space. It hasn't worked out well. Uh, something that I did a lot of the why was people are constantly calling for indoor birthday space. Um, they'll come, they'll see the room, they'll quickly see that it doesn't really work out. It's it's a, it's a tight space. And when you get twelve uh screaming seven year olds in there, it it doesn't work great. Uh, and then the times that they want this is is in the winter. And as as you know, the the hall middle school gym would be a great space for it, except it is booked solidly uh with basketball, which is in season in the winter. So a bigger space, I think, would get a lot of weekend use, would get a lot of night use. And then based on the location, I think it would get a lot more use during during the weekdays um when when school is in session and and people can be out at the park.
Okay. Thank you. No big slide presentation?
Can I just ask Nick to clarify for the public and and the council? When you say five thousand, seven thousand in rental income, what are the renters? What what are the uses that are rented?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we we rent with uh Marin Cities Villages. We had we had a a church that was there as long as as I'd been there that rented on Sundays. Uh, we've had Toastmaster groups, we've had scout groups, um AA groups, um, lot of sports meeting, a lot of boards meet, uh, you know, Little League boards and and CYO boards that have that have met there. Uh, and then a lot of the, so that's a, that's most of our our rentals. We've done some private tutoring and stuff out of there. Um, but mostly it's mostly it's, it comes down to our programming.
Okay, so it sounds like you're advocating for the twenty four hundred for programmatic reasons. Um, I totally get that. So go ahead.
Yeah, Nick, I this is helpful. I I guess, could you say a little more? I mean, I I um you know, I think that since this last discussion, the the primary concern is is the money, you know, given the budget and you know, it is an infrastructure cost that um, yeah, that that's that's significant. So, you know, birthdays would be one. I'm I'm because I I, you know, aware of the park and like the table areas there in constant use. And I'm wondering, you know, except for the winter, how much, you know, could we do outdoor? I mean, I I I I'm sure you've thought it through. I'm just trying to for myself and, you know, my colleagues in the public get a, you know, a a better, because to me, that's what the decision hinges on is I really feel Piper Park is is wonderful. And, you know, I've got those two little kids and you know, so I'm a I'm a customer, but I'm also really aware of our city's finances. So, you know, the more you can say about, you know, the details of the program or what you forecast or what the alternatives are, you know, I know people you know, could have done stuff outside. They use the volleyball courts a lot. I mean, I'm I'm just wondering what the opportunity cost is here from a park director's point of view.
Yeah, thank you. The um speaking seasonally, you're you're right, because because birthday parties during the summer are not going to be indoors. That's that's that is more of a winter attraction. Um, during the summer, what we'd be looking at specifically in the summer is camps really do need indoor space. Um, and we have struggled finding that indoor space for camps, especially on hot days. We have camps that operate completely outside and and we got lucky this summer. completely outside and and we got lucky this summer. Um, but but a lot of the times, the the heat can be brutal and having some kind of indoor space to pivot to is great. Um, I like to maximize space. So so when we've we've rented out the gym to to a camp or we we have a camp going in the gym, we can't utilize that space to get get maybe a baseball camp some some indoor time.
And and you know, we're currently in the hall middle school space, which I'm assuming is is possibly, you know, occupied at least as an office. Uh, you know, during business hours, which is not necessarily when you have demand. Is there a possibility of still using that space? You know, for some of these, for just for this programming, you know, you you'll still need your offices, which, you know, we're giving up.
Yeah, so the the space is looking to to change. I don't think that don't think that the school district has necessarily announced what they're they're looking to do, but my understanding is that they're looking to create office space out of the community room.
Okay.
Keep the current community room in in half and use that as a smaller meeting space. So that space won't be available to us.
And we're leasing from them now, so they can um.
And the school district has been great about
Right.
partnering with us and and, you know, we'll still have use of the gym and um, but but I I
But they have indicated they need that space. Yeah.
Correct.
Um, so great, thank you for that. Um, this is a business item, and I know we have members of the public here, so I'm gonna give them an option before we ask more questions, if that's all right with everybody? Is there anyone, um, it's a business item, so it's not a public hearing. If you're interested in speaking on this matter, um, I'll go online first. Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment or ask a question on this matter? Uh, Mr. Holmes? Good, uh, hold on, Allison's gonna unmute you. Yes, sir.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Just when I hear all these numbers, I just have to ask the council, please don't discount completely the option of putting park and rec into the space that will be freed up when the library moves. Uh, it's may not be uh, ideal proximity wise, but uh, you probably can't beat the economics. And uh, perhaps uh, some of the uh, programming could go into the community spaces that will be a part of the library. So please consider that option open also.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any other hands raised online, so I'll come to the chamber. Anyone in interested in bringing up a a comment or an issue in regards to what the staff has presented so far? I I honor, I recognize that there's two members of the Park and Rec Commission in the audience, so.
Jean Fidel, Larkspur Plaza Drive, and I'm a Park and Rec Commissioner. Uh, so I'm here in support of uh, Director Nick Stone. Uh, I was here last, well, two weeks ago when this subject was first brought before you. Um, and I wanna uh, throw a big thank you out to uh, uh, Councilmember Margalise who reached out to, I think, most of us. So I really appreciate that. One thing um, that we asked for as commissioners, and I think uh, our our chair will speak to it, is we're here to help you as your boots on the ground, so to speak. Um, we all sort of live and breathe recreation. It's because we never have anybody in the gallery for our meetings. So we clearly have our meetings because we care about Park and Rec. Um, so if you have questions about it or the need for it, we're the folks that you can ask. Um, and I would bring your attention to one statistic that stood out to me from Director Stone's report last time, which was um, uh, McNeer's Park, which is a county, state park?
Yeah.
Has uh, I don't know what I call his secret staffing uh, report that uh, had a hundred ninety two thousand visits in the calendar year of two thousand and four, and Piper Park had three hundred and five thousand visits. So clearly, it's a beloved park by a lot of people. And if the more space we can give that park, the better we'll all be. Um, and I have the utmost faith in City Manager Dan Schwartz and Public Works Director Julian, that they would not put anything in front of you that the city couldn't afford. So um, while it, yes, is pricey, um, and I I called it at fourteen million, I was surprised to hear seventeen million for the library, I would think that the Park and Rec Department is worth three point one million.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Vicki Harrison.
Hi Vicki.
As being mentioned, I am the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, but I'd also like to speak to you as a resident of Larkspur. Uh, do I need to give my address?
No, it's okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, first, I absolutely support and echo everything Jean said. Um, I will not repeat what she said, but what I would like to see us do is build for the future. And I think building just the minimum and maybe not even the minimum for the programming that the Rec Department needs is probably not forward thinking. And I think we should truly build for the future. I don't, I agree with Janine. Three point one million is not a lot when we're talking about a park that is loved by the entire county. Um, I think it gives us opportunity to program more, and I think that as the demographics change in Larkspur, we're going to need to be able to change our programming, and we're gonna need it to be able to expand our programming. Um, so I would one hundred percent endorse building for the future and building something that everybody in Larkspur, including the Rec Department, can be very proud of.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
I I think it was emblematic on Saturday that that the, when you were doing the pumpkin festival, packed with people, all the playground structure was packed. There was uh, cricket games going on. I was commenting to you, every single pickleball and tennis court was busy, and so were the two sand volleyball courts. And you look over at Hall Middle School's playing field, there were soccer games going on there. The only thing I didn't get a chance to look at is how many dogs were in canine commons, but uh, it was definitely a very utilized day on Saturday. So I I think that speaks to Vicki's comment too. But you have provided that data for us last time, so thank you. Um, is there anyone else in uh, would like to make public comment about this? Okay, so I'll bring it back to us for a further discussion after hearing the from staff and from public comment. Any, anyone have something they'd like to bring forward?
Madam Mayor, could I uh?
Ask more questions?
Question, yeah. So uh, Director Stone, uh, Mr. Holmes mentioned potentially using the space in the li- in the commons or the library for some of the activities. I was listening to you, I think twelve people in a step class probably wouldn't be appropriate in the library, but again, that's uh, could you give us your thoughts on, you know, whether the recreation activities that you're talking about would be appropriate in the new library? And if not, why not?
Yeah, absolutely. There there are certainly some meetings that are that are held at the community center that could happen at the library. Um, the vast majority of what we do is probably not appropriate for the library. Um, I don't know that we've really talked much about what the library hours are gonna be. Um, but in recreation, we're operating till um, you know, first thing in the morning till till sometimes ten PM at night, uh, seven days a week uh, with with facility attendance. Um, I don't know that people are gonna have the, I don't know that Toastmasters is gonna have the option to have, you know, meetings until nine, nine thirty um, at the library. Uh, and and yes, you brought up, brought up the noise. A lot of our programs are loud. Um, and uh, theater is one that's constant singing. I I can't imagine that that would be appropriate in the library. Um, and any kind of sports program, a birthday party, anything involving food, I I just can't see happening in the library.
But I think to to also to the point you made last time is that a key part of your role and making sure that the public is safe and the users of the park are safe is your direct accessibility to be right there on site. Um, because things come up, the power goes out on the band and you need to run, but you're also there to to s- to sort of be the room or the the yard monitor also for what's happening in the park. And if you were to locate down below here when this library exits, that ability to have eyes on the ground and be accessible to um, to community use would be very uh, limited, I would think.
Yeah, it would be a challenge to get down here and any any sort of altercations that that took place or
Yeah.
kind of clarification. We, we often have a lot of issues um, with confusion with rentals.
Right, and people using picnic tables they hadn't reserved.
Exactly. So it's not necessarily confusion as as opposed to just, yeah. People not wanting to do the right thing.
Not to mention the dogs off leash, which has also been an issue you've had to manage too.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so a lot of questions. I have a lot of meetings in Piper Park. I meet a lot of people down there to show them the space. Um, and and then just after school, I think you can, you can go down there after school as sports start to to happen and and you can see Josh and I there um, out for pretty much anytime after after three to four. If we're not out there, we're likely in the gym.
Um, all right. Sure.
I'm got a uh, kind of an observation and a couple of questions. So so I'm I'm still, you know, weighing the costs and and, you know, the one thing that struck me, like there seems to be so many trade offs in the options that Julian gave us. Um, but what I did is I just kind of wrote down the total cost, how long this will last and how much area we get out of it. And so, you know, the most attractive one is the temp trailers. It's four hundred thousand. But it's also only fourteen hundred square feet and might last ten years. So I just did a simple ratio of cost over time and area. So so the trailer is twenty eight fifty per square foot per year. And it's actually the fifty year three point one million option is cheaper. So um, that's a twenty five per square foot per year. And the most expensive is the the one point eight million nineteen twenty that we tried to move. So that was an observation and that's couch math. I don't know if it's any good. Um, Julian, my question maybe to you is more, you know, what this is heavily weighing is the lifetime. You know, so forward thinking as our park people, you know, you're thinking also about the value of the community. Part of it is our pocketbook and infrastructure. So my question then is, what is that? What is really the meaning of a ten year building? Like after ten years, you have to start pouring money into it or you have to start tearing it down? Because my simple math says after ten years, you put another one and you keep replacing them. And in that sense, you know, it's almost a third the cost to go with the most expensive option.
That's it's more environmentally sensitive to not be tearing down and replacing every five years to ten?
Yeah, so the expective, expected life of the facility depends on a number of factors. One, um, that's primarily what we've used here is uh, the quality of of the build, um, the materials that go into it and how it's constructed. Um, but it's not a, it's not a definite. So when I say that a portable trailer, you could get ten years out of it. Um, if you have a number of events and people using the building that don't take the greatest care of it, that ten years can turn into five years pretty quickly. Um, but if someone meticulously looks after and maintains a building that's designed for ten years, you can maybe get fifteen years out of it. Um, once you start progressing through those permanent options and you go to the basic and the enhanced, the construction and the materials on those buildings um, are much better able to handle um, different uses and are, there's not as much um, not as much room for flexibility and how much more quickly that building will lose its lose its lifespan. Uh, because the the quality of the building, the materials is just superior. And so that's kind of more of a, more of a definite fifty year. I'd say that the ten year, yes, you could maybe stretch it to fifteen, but given that it's gonna be used by the public and different users in it, I I wouldn't count on it. And yes, the the cheaper the build, the less it lends itself to being renovated um, or rehabbed. Um, when those cheaper constructions typically start to go bad, you're looking at replacing them and and starting over. So yes, it would be if you wanted to do the math, um, on what I presented, that ten year uh, portable is that cost over again, plus whatever inflation you have ten years down the road is what I would, what I would anticipate it would be.
So it's really the bones. I mean, the steel in the most expensive option are the bones that are gonna keep it going. And when you say ten year, you know, I mean, I, you know, I look around Larkspur and some of the dilapidated structures that are public or semi-public and they're standing and standing and standing. But you know, your opinion is that after ten ish years, we start over. So that cost, that four hundred is gone, and then it becomes eight hundred, and then it becomes twelve hundred. You know, over the course of fifty years, by my math, will have exceeded the cost, be if we still wanna, you know, pursue that purpose there.
More than likely. And again, because this is uh, would be a public space and would be accessible by the public, then your level of maintenance that you need to keep up there is above and beyond what a simple homeowner may be comfortable with in their home. Um, you know, we have to make sure that we take care of the public that are gonna be in there. And if there's things that are not right or not working, then they have to be um, addressed right away and and fixed. And the level of what a building is not fit for public use anymore um, is probably a lower threshold than what of, you know, a private company may be able to willing uh, to live with for uh, for office space, uh, for example. And the other big difference is it's not just the lifespan and it's not just the the dollars per year. You're getting a much better quality building at the higher price point. So when the Recreation Director is looking to rent out the space, it's gonna be a more attractive space if it's built to a higher standard than a fourteen hundred square foot trailer is maybe, you know, some people are gonna hum and ha about renting that out for their birthday. Whereas if you build them um, something to the same quality of construction we're building the library, um, and we're able to put windows in and, you know, everything that Nick says will really make the space a uh, welcoming for for rentals. Um, that's the other thing you're 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 getting uh, with a with a higher quality build too.
Thank you.
The dollars of
Yeah, that that helps a lot.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, thank you, everybody, for the information. And um, Julian, I just wanna ask the question, and you may have already covered this, so apologies if you have. The the reconfiguration of the space to meet the nineteen twenty requirement um, has um, the multipurpose room and then some space for storage on the side of it. The the size of that multipurpose room, how does that compare to what we currently have? Um, that's being used by Parks and Rec today and rented for the programs that we're we're offering today?
Yeah, so it's uh, bigger square footage wise, and it's also the most important thing from talking with uh, Director Stone is the shape and the configuration of the room. The programming currently is limited because the space that um, is in the current building is about eighteen feet wide, and it really limits what you can do in that space. And so um, the space we're looking at in the nineteen hundred square foot footprint, we've got up to twenty two um, feet wide, which is the width Nick says he would wanna increase the current space to as a minimum. And then you jump up to twenty five uh, feet wide um, in the twenty four hundred square foot space. So it's it's bigger in space, but more importantly, from chatting with Nick, it's about getting a more usable space, and it's really that width that he was trying to maximize when we were playing around with the floor plan.
Okay, great. And then my next question is this nineteen twenty square footage could also accommodate the addition of another module later in time if we find that we have a lot more requests for this community resource space than we can accommodate. And we find down the road perhaps that, you know, those requests can't be accommodated in maybe what becomes a community room here in City Hall and or the community resource aspects or uh, areas of our uh, library that will be opening. So that would accommodate an add on like the one above it?
Yeah, so the the twenty four hundred uh, square foot footprint, we estimated we could add on another two twelve foot wide units in the future if we needed to. So if we do the nineteen twenty, then there's room to potentially add another up to three units on in twelve foot wide increments in the future, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, and was any uh, any consideration given to um, the fact that well, I guess probably, no, I forget. I I don't have a question, other questions.
So
Yeah.
Okay, so it it sounds like you gave us, we we have a lot of options to go through right now, but I'm hearing that we, um, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing I'm hearing that we, um, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing that keeping a standalone restroom with the costs associated with that is not something that we're supportive of, that the whatever we decide as far as the type of modular size or, and the size, uh, the square footage, it should include the restrooms with it. Am I hearing that from everybody?
Yeah.
It sounds like the standalone restroom is just not, uh, uh, ultimately the most feasible cost effective thing so that we're, we can eliminate that from the discussion. Does that make, does everybody seem pretty agreeable to that? That brings us then to deciding on which of the options that were given, which include the restroom component to it so that we can still accommodate a staff restroom and, um, uh, public restrooms there. So, um.
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, I, I don't know if I heard this right, but the, the difference between the 1920 square feet and the 2,400, uh, 100 square feet in the recreation room was 22 feet wide to 25 feet wide. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. And, uh, Director Stone, I guess, do those three feet make a difference? I mean, it's a, I, I help me understand why those three feet are important.
Yes, that, that three feet is, um, actually it's, it's funny because it's actually the size of the room that we currently have if you take out the closets, storage. Um, so, so what you have still is kind of a, an awkward space. Is it usable? Absolutely. Um, and I, and I think that having, having windows makes it, um, makes it feel more open, but, but again, you get into the, the kind of the, the narrower type rectangular room that's a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Um, okay. So it sounds like, uh, the staff report is, um, for us to choose one of the options presented or the other is to provide alternative direction. I anybody interested in providing alternative direction? Or do we feel like we've really got a lot here that we can finally make a decision on?
I just had another, I mean, this, this is all really helped focus, you know, what seemed to be viable options. Um, on the money side, uh, maybe the city manager. So, you know, let's say we're looking at two or $3 million. How, how does that look as far as, I, I know we discussed this last time, but a little bit of rehash might be helpful because it seems like we're coming closer to a decision.
Yeah, you, you have a very healthy capital fund within the general fund reserve.
It's.
They were in the last report, uh, so I caught them in a second.
20,565,000.
That's the whole capital budget.
General Fund Reserve details.
There might be.
Okay.
Uh, point being, as I've always told you, in that capital fund, the dollar you spend here is the dollar you're not spending. What are the other things that I feel are coming down the pipe that I might need to spend this dollar? It gets challenging because we have, in my mind, we sort of have two types of assets, sort of these fixed structural assets like this one where the community sees it, perceives it, uses it. Now we've got the assets people always think about, the quiet one that I tell you I worry about all the time, or just storm drains. And it's always sort of balancing those needs. The good news is we certainly have voter support to invest measure G amount of that. So the big belief where you could think more about this capital fund going into a long time purchase to help community services and you know, the other thing I struggle with, that being a city manager coming more from a planning finance background that I think I hear somebody struggling with is community service assets are not, it's hard to quantify the, the return, right? Because it's hard to know. There's not a dollar return. There's that intangible.
I mean.
If we spend a dollar on this building, how much pleasure are we giving to the community? It's hard to think about that. I almost should have invited the manager from San Sono because he's a rec guy and he could probably stop. Uh, but I hear, I hear you struggling with it. It's the same thing. I struggle with like this boss. He's chatting with him about this project. So.
Sorry. And just one last, so I'm, you know, trying to make the best of the uncertainty. So what I'm hearing is our reserve capital portion is 20 million?
It's seven point, 7.19, 7 million.
Okay.
7.1.
Yeah, the whole reserve is pretty healthy, but we, you were saying.
719.
Buckets, kind of 7 million, but that's the bucket for town.
Okay. So we're, we're talking about possibly using a third or half of that or something. And then, you know, the other piece in the fuzzy math is, is, you know, what are the opportunity costs? So we have this building, you know, which we know we don't have money or plan for yet. And then there's storm drains, which, you know, with measure G and, you know, the last storm drain report, I mean, I remember something like a $25 million liability of which, you know, we're getting a million a year. So, you know, these are very rough numbers, but it's clearly not fully addressing that. And then there's the fire stations and we have our, you know, fire chief here and I, you know, that keeps me up at night. You know, what are we doing with, you know, those 25 or 50 million? So, you know, for the council as well, I mean, you know, I, I guess, you know, the uncertainty is, is not only what's the return? Cause I, I personally feel like looking at this county, you know, I'll look at Mill Valley and, and their community center for me has always been a quality of life thing. It's just a incredible building, just like their library. It's beautiful to, you know, at a smaller scale, have 2,400 square feet that have that aesthetic that provide that experience to me is enormously valuable. So I'm, I endorse that. Um, you know, on the other hand, you know, the, the other things seem more, you know, on public safety centered. The fire station, the storm drains, you know, clearly those two. And then city hall, you know, sits a little bit more in the aesthetic of that. So I, I'm just, you know, offering my, you know, my thoughts to the council and to the public, you know, where this becomes difficult for me because, you know, I'm leaning towards, you know, what seems to me the proration of the 2, 2,400 and 1920 is almost perfect. They're both $25 per foot per square. So the cheaper one, if we just lose a couple of square feet, puts us at a 2.6 million dollar price tag. And we got the bathroom solved. That kind of sits okay. Um, you know, at the same time, like what about the storm drains? What about the fire station? So I offer that up as, you know, my dilemma for the rest of us to think about too.
Thanks, Gabe. Madam Ware, may I make some comments? Um, I, I would like to just first of all, say that I did reach out to several residents and have several conversations about this to make sure that I'm not coming from a place of my own personal opinion, but getting some real input from the community. And I want to say that, um, you know, I got input for everything from go with the cheapest, least cost option to go to the most expensive. So, um, but I did get some good insights and I, I do want to just, I put them down and I want to share them with the public. Um, you know, that quality of life is key to residents and parks could contribute to that in a big way, of course. Uh, Parks and Rec staff is key to ensuring our public's enjoyment and engagement with the operation of the park. So it, it's become apparent through my conversations and through, um, Nick's, uh, presentation to us that he and his staff need to be onsite. So they need to run the programs at Piper Park, um, and that including a commuting community resource center is really important as well. Um, what I learned was that the theater company is our most consistent use today of the community resource center. So you know, it is something that is noisy and loud and needs space, but, um, uh, but currently, you know, that space sits unused during school hours. So, you know, I, I like the idea of shrinking the flex office space that was originally in the plan for contractors and meetings and other things, knowing that that space probably during most of the work hours is going to be available for those types of things, you know, contractors and flex meeting space. Um, and then, you know, we saw a comment that was made is that this building is not a Larkspur centerpiece like the library or the city hall. So you know, we need to provide housing to staff and support community functions, but we shouldn't be comparing it to, uh, a statement piece like our library or like our historical piece, city hall. Um, so I heard from a lot of people that they were not, not a lot of people, sorry. I, I would like to rephrase that. I heard from a few people. They're not favorable of the most expensive options with large projects like city hall, the central fire stations, um, you know, coming down the pike that we have limited uh, revenues and our revenues are shrinking, um, that we need to be fiscally responsible in the way we move, move forward in this decision. Um, someone did share that at minimal, you know, the seismic upgrades to city hall is a higher public safety pri- safety priority. Given that it houses much of our city staff and our council chambers and that I learned from the charrette was about a five to six million dollar project if we were just to put the, you know, seismic, uh, measures in place to shore up our city hall and then reconfigure downstairs when the library moves. Um, so they also suggested not the biggest footprint because it takes away from the primary purpose of the park, which is an open space to be enjoyed by the public. Um, and was any consideration given for the director having, um, some workstation, more formal office space here with the rest of the city hall staff and that city hall is traditionally the place where the administration offices are. And being a part of the team and being all together here rather than, um, always over at the park, uh, might be beneficial. And then, um, you know, if council decides to build this, please to be as sustainable as possible, including, you know, a minimum of solar panels and battery to offset, uh, the increasing cost of electricity. And then the operational costs moving forward on the building. So I did want to share those notes that I had taken. Thank you. Um, and so I'll just go back to, um, you know, I would, would, um, after hearing, uh, council member Paulson's thoughts, I would be leaning towards, um, that, you know, least lower cost option, smaller square footage. Um, but I would consider that, you know, enhanced modular version. Um, so that we could, it, it, that's the longer lifespan, correct? Right? Um, so that we could have a longer lifespan on the building and that we could then, if we needed to, and we don't find that we have additional resources based on what happens in the library and here, add on to it at a further date.
So you're looking at, um, slide 13 on, on the handout?
Yeah.
The 2.6, this is your proposal, the 2,400 square foot, 2.6 basic.
No, 1920, 2.6 enhanced.
2.6.
Enhance, right, yeah. Okay, just clarifying.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, just wanted, and you want, were you going to say something?
Uh, there was one question or statement made that I, I'd love an opportunity to address because it's one I've thought about a lot. Nick and I have some breaking ads about movies and sports and stuff like that. So I'd be thrilled if he was here all the time in the building. But the way we're structured in Larkspur in order to provide the best service, but under budget is we run a really small staff and our directors, it might be a misnomer, the term director, that we just sit in office, the director is just sitting in offices. Nick's not an administrator. He's just sitting in an office. In fact, it's a good chance if you go to his office, he's not there. He's out in the park because the maintenance guys are smart and who knows how to fix something. So he went out and fixed it because it just needed to get done. Or he's over on the tennis courts refereeing a dispute between the pickleball players and the tennis court. Because we don't have another staff person to, to do that. So when we say he needs to be down there, that's some of the reason that he needs to be down there is because those things are coming up constantly and we don't have someone for him to pick up the phone and call and say, don't deal with that. He is that person. He's the person who has to identify the problem and fix. And that's why, as much as I would love to be able to talk about movies every day with him, if maybe we both like, I think he probably needs to be down.
Um, okay. So thank you for that. And it sounds, and putting not, um, uh, an amendment, not an amendment, not a, um, motion, but giving your opinion of where we should be headed. Um, anyone else want to chime in? Yes.
I just have a question. Um, Director Stone. No, actually, actually you don't have, sorry. This is a Julian question. Ju- Julian, I, I am assuming that there's some kind of savings in building the 2,400 square foot building at one time as opposed to building 1,920 square feet and then saying we want to add on later and then bringing it up to 2,400. Uh, is that accurate? And if it is accurate, can you kind of give us an estimate of you know, what we are saving by doing it all at once as opposed to doing it in pieces?
So yes, it would definitely help if I turn my mic on.
Um, it would definitely be more cost effective to build 2,400 square feet now versus 1,920 now and another 480 in 10 years. Um, and the primary reason for that is there's some demolition of the existing building that will be required to add the new um, unit on. What that is, having costed it out, uh, my gut, um, you're also, it's going to be a smaller project. So these things are scalable somewhat, but the cost per square foot goes up with a smaller project. So you would have the additional cost of it being a smaller project. Plus you would have the additional um, demolition of your existing building and the unwiring and rewiring everything. So probably in the 20 to 50% additional cost of whatever that delta is, plus whatever the cost escalation is in the, the time that would lapse. So if the difference is half a million in the square footage today, then my estimate would be, it would be in the 650 to 750,000 dollar range.
In today's dollars.
In today's dollars, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
So thinking about this, I'd just like to put forward, um, that I think sometimes we are given these options and we tend to to, um, skimp on things. And, um, I understand all the budget concerns, but we've had opportunities to, to, um, to invest in infrastructure buildings in the past here. And a council voted it down and, and then we're left with, um, a situation where we're going to have to spend that money in a different way. And I'll give you an example. Our new library and community center that's going in, we debated fiercely whether we could add some additional office space there that could be used for, um, um, some of our staff, not recreational staff necessarily, but other staff. And we costed that out and it would have been a big savings to have done that because the construction was already happening. Um, it would be an additional, a few, um, thousand square feet that we could have added to it. But to save some money, we, the council voted that down. They had their reasons for voting it down. But in many ways you have to, you have to look at that as an opportunity lost. Because now we're still going to need to invest that money in a different way, in a different office space without the ability to have the cost savings of the multiple projects in the construction at the same time. So putting that forward and I, and I appreciate our park and rec people saying we have an opportunity to invest in the future here. Probably none of us will be on the council in the future when this needs to be reexamined in 50 years, but we're investing in, um, we have an opportunity to invest in a really key quality of life issue that, um, our community takes enormous interest and advantage in. If Saturday was any indication, there were hundreds of people in that park, just in the hour and a half I was there. It's a definitely a draw to, to not only the quality of life here for a lot of our community, but in the last 10 years, the turnover of, of, of many of our seniors no longer living here and young families having bought into Larkspur and having bought into Green Bray and really finding the reason why they did is because we provide and we invest in families and we invest in this infrastructure. And I, I would just like to put that forward because I think sometimes we're a little, we get a little hyper focused on saving a dollar here and a dollar there, when in the long run, we're going to have to spend it anyway. Because we don't invest in the long range future of projects at the costliest, best time that they are put forward. So any other thoughts or comments that anybody else want to weigh in on? And I voted against that one. I think you were on the council when we voted to not add out additional office space to the.
I'll, I'll just add my thoughts. I, I feel that, you know, the, the opportunity cost discussion here is one that I think about a lot. And in particular with City Hall. And it's not cosmetic because we don't have the money for the cosmetic upgrades at City Hall. So it, it really is, when I think about it, about sort of the seismic stuff here. And, and that to me is a safety issue. So, you know, this is something that I wanted to bring to council probably at, at the start of the new year. But I do think that, you know, we need to continue the process, the public process with City Hall. But I also think council needs to have a plan, a near term plan for some, some of the stuff that might happen or break at City Hall. And so that's going to take, that's going to take money. And so when I think about that, it's sort of weighing that versus, you know, do we want, you know, the nicest build on this Parks and Recs? You know, and we, we do also want to support, absolutely want to support our recreation director and what we're doing. And, you know, make sure that we are providing our residents a nice space that, you know, everyone's happy using. So, so those are the things that I think about really is, you know, we, we, do we spend the extra dollars here? Or can it be, you know, can the dollars be used elsewhere where we, we know that we have some serious issues that, you know, that need to be addressed? So that's kind of.
So would you like, would you like to put forward any of these options as something that we can put forward as a resolution or a motion? Anybody interested in doing that?
Well, let me, let me, just a couple of quick comments and then I will do that. My, my first comment is, I appreciate that and that, that's, that's legit. I, I think we're, we're talking about, you know, Sarah suggested the 2.6, I think. Madam Mayor, you're looking towards a 3.1 as if I'm reading you correctly. And City Hall, I know Councilman Murgley's, I think, mentioned a $5 million number. I had heard an $18 million number for, for City Hall. I think it does need a lot of work. I think the $500,000 that we're talking about is not going to make that difference. I think we are going to need some kind of bond or some, some financial assistance, some, some measure to deal with the fire stations, to deal with City Hall. I mean, we have some infrastructure issues coming up that the money we're talking about is not going to make a difference without one way or another. And we are going to have to deal with that, but I just don't think we're dealing with that tonight. I mean, that's, that's kind of another can of worms that's, that's on the, on the, on the horizon. For right now, my life lessons have always been, when I skimmed, I regretted it. You know, because you have a cost savings when you do everything at once that you go back later and you say, oh, I should have done that and now it costs you twice as much. And I think we're at one of those crossroads right now that, yes, we could save some money. But I think at the end of the day, we're going to look back and say, ah, it's too small. We should have made it bigger. Now it's more expensive. You know, either we're not happy with it or we have to pay more to get it to where we want it to be. So for that reason, I am leaning towards the, the larger building with a nicer build. Because I think it, it's what our community wants. And I think it's, I think it's what our community deserves. I mean, I think it's, it's a beautiful park and it deserves a nice building there. But again, that's.
So you're, you would like.
Happy to hear other.
You would like to move the 2, uh, the 2,400 square foot enhanced option?
As, as, as a discussion or, or a vote if you think it's appropriate, but that, that's where I'm leaning right now.
I'll, I'll just chime in quickly because I, I'm, you know, to kind of cut to the chase, I, I'm between the 1,920 and the 2,400. Cause you know, again, just the, the longevity of the buildings and everything we've heard and, you know, and the aesthetic and experience. The, the one thing, Scott, I'm just, you know, I agree that the numbers are so big for fire and for City Hall that it's almost like, you know, but I, you know, I feel the storm drains. It's, you know, I read that report really carefully in 2019. I remember 25 million bucks or something and, and we are chipping away at it because things have priority. So, you know, going to the most, you know, corroded pipes that could become sinkholes in the streets. And, you know, Julie, you know, keep me honest on, on what's going on now. But once we got our, you know, snake and, and video assessments, I think we're addressing them to the tune of a million a year. So, you know, to me, the cost savings of half a million could make a meaningful difference on, on the truly high priority safety issues of this building. And I, I would like to keep that option on the table. So that's the value of going for the cheaper option. Now, what I think would be skimping, you know, to your life lesson is what I started, you know, walking through this. I'm like, let's just build a trailer. 400,000 just sounds like a really good number. But the more I thought about it and the more I heard from, from, you know, Julian and Nick and all, I'm, I'm like, no, no. We, I think we need the 50 year building. But, but I, I feel the, you know, and Sarah seemed to be pushing that direction too. The expansion, you know, it is 150,000 and, and it would be demand based. It would be very beautiful, you know, does that 400 or is that the right number? The square footage, yeah, 480 square feet, is that really us skimping on the future? Or is that freeing up a half million, which is not chump change for high priority emergency issues? We are not going to fix City Hall for half a million. But maybe that'll start money, that'll attract money, that'll get us down the road of a, a high priority. So maybe Julian could speak to whether this line of reasoning is, is beyond speculative. Like would half a million from what you know, make a difference here?
Well, before we do that though, funding sources for the storm drains is an entirely different process because we passed a bond measure to fund them. And so they're, they already have their line item being funded. Correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they're. Well, a sales tax measure, excuse me. They're already being funded from that stream of revenue and that will go on for 30 years while that sales tax measure. We're talking, so that, that will be funded already through that. We're not taking from that pile and bringing it here.
Correct. And my point wasn't that we're, you know, stealing from Paul to give to Peter. It's just the amount was my point. That, you know, the daunting amount of what these storm drains require. I, I was just so heartened to see that close to a million a year is really addressing the issue. So I'm, I'm trying to say to Scott's, you know, the overwhelm of what City Hall and fire buildings, you know, that half million could really come in handy. So I'm just trying to say, you know, keeping that powder dry is worth something. But, but again, I'd love to hear from Julian on that because that's just my, my gut.
So is, is the question whether I feel that half a million dollars would be helpful towards the storm drain?
No, the storm drain was, was just an impact question. It's, it's really City Hall right now that, that I think we're talking about.
I mean, it, it's hard to say. So there's a couple of cost estimate scenarios we've run for City Hall. One's 6 million plus and the other's 22 million plus. Those are, those are big projects that are going to require a lot of conversations. And I don't, I don't think the, the, the half million dollars is going to have much play in one way or another in, in all of those conversations. There's, you know, there's, there's obviously some seismic things we would like to do in the building, but that, those are not half million dollar fixes. There's conversations through the process about things that need to get fixed that are going to trigger other things in this building. We can't just come in here and spend a million dollars on little seismic fixes. It's going to trigger a lot of other things. So that, that 6 million or the 22 are kind of real, real numbers that are going to have to have real conversations that have, don't get me wrong, half a million dollars is, is a lot of money. But I don't think whether we have it sitting somewhere is going to have much impact on those conversations.
Okay.
In, in my.
Okay, that, that's sort of, you know, helps me then. Thank you.
So it looks like we have two options and we've really elaborated on these. And the difference between them is $500,000. Because it's a 3.1 for the 2,400 square foot building enhanced or it's 2.6 for the 1,920, a difference of $500,000. I, I don't hear any of us are, are wanting to go for the super basic idea that, that was presented. The super basic idea, we seem to have pushed past that. So, okay, well, all, I will move that we, I'll move it forward because I see our fire, our fire chief is next on the docket here. And I, and I really believe we've had a really robust two meetings on this discussion. And I think I really appreciate how frugal we like to examine things. But I also know that our budget, as Julian just explained, some of our large infrastructure projects are going to require a large ask and it's going to have to come out of somewhere other than our, our straightforward budget here. So I will put forward, I'll move that we provide direction on returning with a budget amendment to add a project to fiscal year 2526 of the capital improvement program for a new building and the relocation of the Park and Rec at 2,400 square feet in the enhanced option that was outlined and reviewed at 3.1 million for the Public Works Director's assessment.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. So all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, any abstentions? No. So that motion passed three to two. Thank you, everyone, for your robust conversation about this. And we look forward to this coming back to the council for final confirmation. Anything you want to add before we depart from this matter?
I'm sorry, do we need a vote on the electric charging?
No, he's already pulled that from the budget.
Right, but do we need to now approve that separately?
Give us a correction with that vote on what's bringing for an actual budget. We're going to agree EV charging as a budget reminder. We need a little more time and document potential other sources to further EV charging. It will all come back to you.
And the police station's doing EV upgrades too, you know, they're pissed of that.
They're running into the same key problem that we are though about the V time.
All right. Thank you very much, Park and Rec Commissioners for being here and our director. That brings us to item, business item 8.2A and 8.2B, which are very lengthy titles that I'm not going to read because I will do the synopsis, which is an update to the fire, California State Fire Codes. And we will get a staff report from Central Marin Fire Authority Chief Ruben Martin.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Mayor and members of the council, Fire Chief Ruben Martin for the Central Marin Fire Authority. I'm here before you today for our triannual code adoption cycle for the California, the 25, 2025 version of the California Fire Code. A little background for those that aren't familiar on how the codes are developed. The model codes are developed by the International Code Council every year. And once those are updated with any new regulations required for fire safety, they are then published within the California Building Standards Commission. Captures them along with the State Fire Marshal's Office. And they go through the model code and make the California amendments to those codes. That usually takes about 180 days for them to make their amendments and publish them. They were published on July 1st of 2025. Once we received them, the California Building Standards Commission and the California Fire Marshal allows the local jurisdiction to make local amendments based on local findings, findings which deal with weather, topography and seismic. With that, our fire prevention officers within the county, so everyone within the county that's a fire prevention officer got together biweekly and looked through the California issued California Fire Code and then reviewed them along our local amendments and then made changes to see what needs to be done. Some of the biggest changes with the 2025 California Fire Code is that for the first time within California's history, they are adopting a California WU code. Prior to that, what they would do is take sections for wildfire mitigation efforts, which is vegetation management or building construction standards. And they were either located within the California Fire Code, the California Building Code and the California Residential Code. So the biggest portion of this year is those portions were removed with the California Fire Code and put into its own standalone code. All the amendments that are being made to the 2025 California Fire Code that's before you today are the exact same amendments that are currently adopted within the Larkspur Municipal Code. We pushed everything through with the exact same amendments. Due to the, the reasoning that the, there was a trailer bill that went through the budget process this year that required all agencies to get any substantial changes to with any adopted codes regarding construction methods to be done prior to, or in September, so they can be adopted by October 1st. The Fire Code was, as long as we had the same standing existing ordinances, we could then push them through, through our normal adoption process. So with that before you, what I have here is our staff recommendation is for your council to introduce the proposed ordinance number 1092, adopting the 2025 California Fire Code, which prescribes regulations governing conditions hazards to life property from fire or explosion, providing the issuance of permits hazards, uses of operations establishing the Bureau of the Fire Prevention and providing officers therefore and defining their powers and duties. And repealing 106th ordinance number 1063. And then set a public hearing on the proposed ordinance at a date and time of the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Thank you.
With that, I'm open for any questions.
So while we're looking at 8.2A and 8.2B, do, can we take them together, Sky? Or do we have to have, since there's a code adoption that is a standard issue? Are there questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I didn't understand what you just said. So it, it sounds like, tell me if I'm getting this right, that the state had passed regulations. We have the same regulations already passed in Larkspur. And now we are passing something to modify our Larkspur or, or Larkspur regulations to comply with the rider that was passed, but it doesn't substantially change. Or how, how is what we're doing changing our current regulations?
I think Sky has something to say.
Maybe I could try to.
Okay.
Is, um, so the model code, just think of that as your vanilla based standard code that is used throughout the entire United States.
Okay.
Every state has local requirements. So the state of California, State Fire Marshal's Office reviews with the model code based on any new regulations that happen throughout, whether it's EV batteries, is it with PV systems, all that's thrown in there. But there's some specific California regulations. So they make those amendments. We then look at them because we, based on our local standards and local findings with our hillsides, topography, local weather, we have made changes through the California Fire Code that are more restrictive than what the state is based on our local regulation and ordinances. So what we did is make sure that the existing updated codes meet and match our existing regulations and ordinance that we have here within the city. And so what we did is just make sure that those two are together. But every three years, we have to adopt a fire code.
So we're adopting a fire code that matches what we already have?
That's correct, but it's got updated standards with this, within the 2025 versus the 2022 standards.
Enhanced standards, yeah.
Okay.
For our specific fire requirement needs. And is every jurisdiction in Marin is looking at updating the same thing?
That's correct.
Yes.
So I believe for the first time in Marin history, all of the fire agencies are adopting the exact same fire code with the exact same language.
And for clarification, you are recommending we adopt this, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Sky, is there anything else you want to add to that? No?
No.
Okay.
I have one question because one of our residents brought something to my attention. And so maybe you can clarify it for us here is that in. Is that um in May, we adopted a um a map for the we WUWE uh interface and the uh fire. Sorry, let me get my fire hazard severity zones um for Larkspur, and that map showed portions of Larkspur that are high fire severity and then others that are moderate. Um, and in in our Larkspur Municipal Code, we also refer to very high fire hazards sever- is severity zones. Um, but those zones that we refer to in our municipal code are not in alignment with the zones that have been called out by the state in the map that was created by the state. And this resident's concern was that we have a much tighter uh definition for high
Hazard.
Yeah, high fire hazard severity zones than the state does. And um, you know, for example, somebody just west of uh Magnolia Street is based on Larkspur's standards in a high fire severity zone area, and that could have consequences for them on getting insurance as well as buying building materials perhaps, if they were remodeling, they would be held to a higher standard. So can you clarify um just for the record that why there's a difference between the high z- high fire? Thank you. And and Larkspur's uh own or general code that has, you know, a much bigger area that is considered high fire hazard severity zones.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
The CalFire or um the fire or the California Fire Fire Border Forestry um issues fire hazard severity zone maps or risk maps. So just think of them equivalent to like a flood map where there is a risk that is potential based on with the fire hazard severity zone based on weather in the area, fuel, which is the vegetation, topography and fire history. So they model all that to try to come up with what's a fire hazard severity zone. Now, a WUWE zone is different than a fire hazard severity zone. A WUWE zone is where homes are actually built into this high fire zone or with intermixed into a wildland area or within a certain distance from an open space area. So that's the difference in semantics, and I can give you what CalFire's definition is here. So um, the definition of a WUWE is a zone where human development is adjacent to or intermingled with an undeveloped wildland. Uh, we described the physical location where two environments meet. So now we have the potential of hu- homes being lost, so that's the wildland urban interface where you have homes. And then um, the fire hazard severity zones are a geographic area designated by the state or sometimes by a local fire agency based on potential wildfire threat. So it's a risk. So a lot of times people will intermix them. There are WUWE zones that could be located within fire or hazards severity zones, like a very high fire hazards severity zones. However, a very high fire hazard severity zone by itself technically isn't a WUWE zone or wildland urban interface zone. And just to give a little credit to your council, in nineteen ninety two, along with um your Larkspur Fire Department was very forward thinking. Because right after the Oakland Hills Fire, um, they created a a local very high fire hazards severity zone, which was all your hillsides west of Magnolia, areas north of um Sir Francis Drake and the Green Bay Hills and areas of uh Palm Hill.
Yeah.
So your local fire chief at the time and your council at the time was very forward thinking because um the state did develop by statute very high fire hazards severity zones. And believe it or not, the only area located within the city of Larkspur that was designated as that was the entrance to the Trail to Dawn Falls. Just one little area. So if you think about the entire fire threat of Larkspur, the state of California never designated or designated it or saw it as a threat. However, we through local knowledge know that it is a threat, and if a wildfire gets established in the area, we could have tremendous loss of life and or property.
Right, thank you very much for that explanation.
You got it. Um, and then I believe um, Madam Mayor, you wanted needed to introduce both of these within one?
Yeah, are there further questions of this particular ordinance?
Yeah, I am also just
We ask a lot of questions.
Yeah. Um, so the for uh you know, the second one is the one that deals with WUWE, not the first, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and and I'm I'm also trying, because I I got, you know, some reading through the first one. Um, what are some of the practical effects, like say, you know, we pick a typical WUWE neighborhood like like Madrone Canyon, you know, what what are some of the practical um, you know, changes that this will mean for residents there?
So this code that you're adopting
Yeah.
will not change any of the regulations that are currently in place within the city of Larkspur.
Okay.
So for basically your uh master fire regulations that you have within chapter, I believe, fourteen ten, in which we are repealing and replacing it with the California WUWE code. So what you did within your designated areas of very high fire hazardous area zone, um homeowners were required to um have a higher level of standard for building construction methods um to allow or to minimize the um exterior wildfire ignition. They're also required for enhanced vegetation management. Um, they're also required enhanced defensive space standards, and those are the homes that where we go out and do actual annual inspections. And so those are some of the things we look at, some of the bigger changes that um or some of the differences between this code and your fire code is that if you're in a wildland urban interface, we really try to pay attention to access and water supply and both ingress and egress, both for uh our community members and for our uh first responders entering into the area in the event that there's an incident.
Okay, and and so the code that we have currently already covers everything you said, and this is a replacement kind of coming from CalFire?
Yes, that's correct, and that's because the way we're adopting um the California WUWE code is it contains building construction methods that are required to be enforced by your building department, which is the enhanced um structure ignitability construction. So your WUWE construction methods where you pick um less ignitable si- um materials for your buildings, and there's more home hardening. And so that's where the requirements are within this. And those are, those requirements are no longer located in the building code and no longer located in the residential code and no longer located in your regular California fire code. So it's a new standalone um California WUWE code.
Okay, okay, so thank you.
Okay, so um the question, the request is for us to consider introducing by title only and then um, wait for the reading of ordinance ten ninety two and ten ninety three and set a date for a public hearing for discussion. So Sky, do we need a motion on this? But on both? Can we wrap them together?
You can wrap them together, but it unfortunately, the title is long but does actually need to be read.
Okay, who wants to do it? Okay, so ten uh introduction of ten ninety two.
Okay, so uh I move that we uh uh pass the introduction of ordinance ten ninety two repealing and reenacting.
Uh, Gabe, I'm sorry, I did not go to public uh comment, and I do see one hand. So hold that thought.
Uh, Ja- James Holmes.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Clear to me, would I comment substantively now or or at the subsequent public hearing?
I think it would be wi- wise to wait until the public hearing when it will have m- more opportunity for robust conversation. This is just a title.
Okay, co- because I know that one, sometimes in the first reading, that's when the substance is and 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 in the subsequent reading, it just passes on the consent calendar. So if I understand then correctly, this will not just go in under the consent calendar, but there will be a separate public hearing.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Back to you, sir.
Okay, so I move that we pass the introduction of ordinance ten ninety two repealing and reenacting chapter fourteen point oh four, adopting the twenty twenty five Cal- California Fire Code and twenty twenty four International Fire Code with amendments supported by local findings prescribing regulations governing conditions hazardous to life and property from fire or explosion, uh, providing for the issuance of permits for hazardous uses or operations and define the powers and duties of the Central Marin Fire Authority and officers.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes. Go round two.
Somebody else? Okay, uh, I I'll move that we also uh um pass the introduction of ordinance ten ninety three repealing and reenacting chapter fourteen point ten, adopting the twenty twenty five edition of the California Wildland Urban Interface Code and twenty twenty four International uh Wildland Urban Interface Code with amendments supporting uh sorry, supported by local findings prescribing regulations governing the mitigation of hazard to life and property from the intrusion of fire from wildfire explosion exposures from adjacent structures and prevention of structure fires from spreading to wildland fuels in the city of Larkspur. And further providing for the issuance of permits and defining the powers and duties of the Central Marin Fire Authority and officers.
Well said. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Um, all in favor? Anyone opposed? No? Any abstentions? No. All right, we look forward to seeing this for a public hearing. Thank you for your patience in waiting out till the long time.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, Madam.
Sure it is. Um, all right, that brings us to up uh eight point three, business item. Um, amending the city's outdoor flag display policy. Um, I asked for this to come before us um after hearing public comment in September when the president ordered flags at half staff. You don't have to stick around if you want to, or do you have to? Your boss is here. I'm cool with it, yeah. Okay. Um, uh, there was some uh question about what our options are. Should there be um an order for lowering a flag at half staff? And I I think we needed to have some clarity on that, and so um this item was brought forward because if this matter comes up again, at least um we will have confirmed our policy about it. So do we need a staff report?
Thank you, I pretty much just given it my
Oh, okay.
We're like a lot of, first off, we're like most of the we have always just followed if we're the governor or the president, we're just flag death laws and they can be down. But as the speaker, you've had a few weeks ago pointed out, that's not law, that's essentially a guideline. So um, we do have an existing flag policy. We took a look at what some other cities are getting on, I think City Clerk Allison Fowles, she actually did all this work. And discovered a lot of cities are essentially bringing it over either to the mayor and mayor and vice mayor uh to be the to get to make the decision whatever been followed.
So because of that, it's not my understanding from what I did some homework from, and maybe Allison can confirm this. It's not a requirement, uh, and we have an option to um abide by a presidential flag lowering order?
So there's no real clear law
Okay.
These federal guidelines around the flag, they mostly speak to certain holidays. Uh, the most notable being Memorial Day has a very specific tradition
Yeah.
of how to handle the plan. After that, most agencies tend to follow a rule of thumb that when our executive boarders, whether it's their president or governor best to be, they follow it. Should also note, we have a long tradition in Marin, as do most agencies in California. We tend to honor fallen public safety officers.
Yeah.
Usually, for example, the Fire Chiefs Association or the uh International Association of Firefighters might say, we'd like to honor ourselves on a certain day. Often do that as well. If you adopt this policy, all these, anytime this comes up, you could call the mayor and vice mayor and say, are you okay with whether it's the president, they've got the honor for firefighters.
Except except for standardly known holidays in which it's lowered, like Memorial Day and September eleventh. Yes. Yeah. Right. Anyone have any questions on this matter? Yes?
Hmm, I, no, no questions. I I just would would hope that the mayor and vice mayor agree.
Well, then I think we listen here that we can call a meeting if we need to, but yeah, we can always call it, but um oftentimes, well, in my experience, um usually it's a, the flag is lowered at specific holidays, but um Memorial Day as an example, um, the most recent occurrence was uh, flag was ordered uh lowered by the president, and we didn't have any um opportunity to have a conversation or a meeting about it because it was essentially done long before we could get gathered together. So this would give us at least some tools in our toolkit to decide.
And it's not hard and fast, the mayor and vice mayor feel like there should be a bigger conversation. You didn't expect that it was called especially meeting of the council.
Yeah. And and we also debated um specialty flags a few years ago. Um, because there was a lot of question about whether we should be displaying other than the California and the United States flag, additional flags like the pride flag and all that. So we modified the policy to um have a council member have that option of of asking for that, but it not to be displayed on the flag pole itself. But um, uh, on the building, so. Um, and I I think it's also um important for the community to know that the flag pole we're talking about is City Hall's, not City Hall's flag pole, it's Piper Park because the flag pole that is in City Hall is actually not City Hall's, it's the Central Marin Fires. Is that correct?
Yes, we've always recognized that flag pole is drawn onto the fire station. It's always been the responsibility of a firefighter to raise another flag. And so it's both stock and policies preexisting. If that flag falls under the lease essentially, so as we noted in the staff report, you may also have the direct from the mayor to make a request to the fire council and police council to consider adopting similar policies.
And the, and I see that in the staff report, and then what uh who would be the recommended person to make the decision about lowering or not lowering it? It would
Well, I think those two councils need to then have their discussion.
Right, okay.
Would be referred to us. Uh, which I wouldn't be shocked if she said that was fine and talked a little bit with one. But if the fire council says we really want to own this decision.
Okay. Well, that's for another day, because we're a fire council, we're not fire council. For our policy, the proposed policy is to amend the fire, um, I mean, the flag flying uh, this outdoor flag display policy um is here. Are there additional questions anyone has? Are we comfortable with the idea that we will then have a little bit more um opportunity to discuss um, a mandatory order? Okay, so it looks like we have um no public comment on that. There's nobody in the room. I don't see any public comments, so you want uh adopt a resolution, so that resolution is fifty uh slash twenty five. Would anyone like to move that?
I'd love to move that.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Any um um abstentions? No. All right, that passes. Now you can leave. I'm, that's not rude if you don't want to.
So I assume we should work with the mayor and that person.
Sure, we can, I I think doing that, um, the police council has, we don't should we do it for police council too, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it should be probably put on the agenda and discussed at both of those, but they're not meeting again until November. So it might have to be after that. I I asked for this to be on because I I feel like this is going to come up again in the um current administration's uh term, so I wanted us to have some tools for that. Um, that leads us to item eight point four, which is a business item amendment number thirteen to the city manager's employment agreement. Um, this has been um now on the agenda several times, and um we have had uh, uh, the council has had closed session about this um with our consultant um several times and with our city attorney. So um, I would like to ask if there's a further staff report on this?
This is council's questions.
Okay, um, Sky, is there anything you need to add? Okay, so I have, keep getting pinged on my phone. The amendment number thirteen to the City Manager's Employment Agreement, I'll bring it back. There's just no further staff report. Is there any conversation that the council would like to have on this matter?
I'll make a motion to pass it.
Well, let me see if anybody has any further conversation before we do that. Giving everybody an option time?
Nope.
Okay, this is a business item, so I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment. And I see no hands raised, so I'll bring it back to the council. And I think Councilwoman Candell was going to say something.
I was going to make a motion to pass this resolution or this business item, or whatever it is we're passing.
Can you read it?
You have to be a little bit clearer than that.
All right, I'll defer to somebody else to make the motion.
No, no.
No, no, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for item eight point four, which is amendment number thirteen to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I oppose.
Are there any abstentions? All right, that matter passed. Thank you very much, everyone. That adjourns our meeting tonight, which brings us to our regular meeting on November fifth. Please, everybody get out there and vote. The ballot should be in your mailbox by now on proposition fifty. And before we leave, I'd just like to close in honor and recognition of our colleague Mark Milberg, who passed away this last weekend. He was a city council member on the city of Novato in his first term, but a very active participant in Cal Cities and with all of us at various functions, and it's a very sad news that he, he passed away unexpectedly. So I, I know there'll probably be more being put forward about any memorial service or anything that will happen. But I just think we should honor our colleague who unfortunately left us very too early. I think he was sixty five or sixty six.
Yeah, he was sixty five, and I think the memorial service was in the IG, I think it's tomorrow, one thirty.
Got it.
At Tennessee Valley, there's a, there's a cemetery there.
Okay. Okay, anything further? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.